Thank you, folks. We appreciate that. Thank you for allowing us to start just a few minutes later this evening, as we have a good deal to cover, but that's fine. Madam Clerk, if you'd call us back in again.
Councilmember Jimmy Clanton.
Here.
Councilmember Rob Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Jasmine Cobble. Councilmember George Turner.
Yeah.
Councilmember Diana Doma.
Here.
Mayor Jason Leary.
Here.
Thank you.
Today, folks, we have a very special guest, as we try to bring in our council meetings with as much God as we can. Our invocation today will be Dr. Nelson V. Hare of Rock Springs Church of Christ. And before he springs it on you, yes, I can hit his church from my house with a rock. If we all stand. Good pastor. If you would bow with me. To the Lord God Almighty, we ask your blessings on the men and the women who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. Help them, dear God, as leaders to ask the right questions. Help them, dear God, as leaders to determine what we need to learn. And then again, help them, dear God, as leaders to understand how we need to change. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know and to do what is right, what is good, and what is true. May we listen patiently and receptively to the issues at hand. May they and we always be guided by the Spirit of community and by the Spirit of justice and by the Spirit of love. This we pray in the name of God Almighty and all that we hold sacred and holy. All these prayers we extend in our Son Jesus' name. Amen. Amen.
Pleasure to be here. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. First lady, appreciate that. Excellent, excellent. We're gonna move to... Did I touch it? We're gonna move to our approval of the council agenda. Council, if you approve, peruse the agenda, and if I have any additional changes, now would be the time.
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
There were two items that we didn't get to on the work session. And one of them is the CAP County Mass Transit Planning Resolution. Municipality's transit planning alignment with countywide role and neighborhood action support. I'd like to add that for action.
Okay, we'll take that on the new business. Number three. And we'll call that Transportation Resolution.
And item number six that we didn't get to was modification of real estate settlement procedures to require executive session before final closing on real estate matters exceeding $25,000 for discussion only.
Okay, we'll have that for number four on the new business for real estate modification and a discussion. Discussion only. Be number four on the new business.
That's me.
Mayor, let's call this resolution Mass Transit, so nobody gets confused. Mass Transit Resolution?
Yes, sir.
So that number three is Mass Transit Resolution. And number four would be real estate modifications. Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Right, Councilman, yep. Yes, ma'am.
How many public hearings we required to have for the comp plan?
Ask that again. How many?
How many public hearings we required to have for the comp plan adoption? Just one? Oh. Okay, I just want to make sure that we were having the public hearing and voting on the resolution in the same meeting. Okay.
Uh, yes, actually, we are. Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the added items from Councilman Turner. To add under new business, number three would be Mass Transit Plan. And number six, the modification of real estate settlements and procedures to be for a discussion only as number four under new business.
Properly moved. Do I have a second? Properly moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, approval of the council meeting. Agenda is approved. We'll go to the minutes. Approval of the June 10th, 2019 City Council Meeting Minutes. Yes, sir. No, did we have somebody? I apologize. Only, only, only you don't have the... No, seriously. Everybody else have awards and honors? Is it on, uh... Missing? Oh, good deal, good deal. I know you... Yeah, 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 we did the... All right, folks, I'll give you a minute to peruse the minutes from the June 10th, 2019 meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I have one addition.
Okay.
Do I have the floor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Just want to add, and this is for the clerk, just for the record, the discussion about my request to abrogate or revoke the Finance or Budget Committee bringing up to standards and according with the governing charter. Just need to have that added.
Madam Clerk, what do you have so far?
She sent me that in an email. But you want to just leave it that the discussion was about abrogating or bringing the finance committee up to standards?
Yes, that's pretty much all. Just so that the reader will have an understanding of what that, I think you did put in there, that there was a robust conversation. But we just need to add for the citizens what the conversation was about, so they don't have to listen to a three-hour video. And I did, if you look at the Charter on line 1134 and 35, page 33, there are committee guidelines. And also, the committees are subject to the same Georgia Sunshine laws under 5014-1, little a, number 1 and 3. So I think because of that, these are notes about compliance with specific legal procedures, and it has to be added by Georgia state law.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman, I don't know what law you're quoting or out of the Charter. But all we're dealing with at this moment is, are our records correct for our minutes? So I'm gonna ask the clerk. Are records correct for the minutes that you took?
I didn't put in the detail of what was said because it would have been a... I didn't want to implement what was one feeling versus another feeling. So I put after much discussion, because it was on the building, the buildout of the City Hall.
Correct.
And it went off subject to finance committees and budget committees. And it wasn't really, there was never a motion made, and I only record what actions are taken.
That's what we're gonna stay with.
Point of order. In the Georgia OCGA 50-14-1, letter E, 1 and 2, it's not optional for this council to make that call.
So, having said that, I'm gonna move that the minutes be approved as submitted by the city clerk. Do I have a second?
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
I've heard your point of order, Councilwoman. You've repeated, you've told me what your point of order is. Now, there's something different than what you are going to just say, what you just mentioned. I'm gonna move that the minutes be approved the way they were recorded by the clerk. Properly moved in second.
Is it for a discussion?
Any further discussion?
Yes. City Attorney, under OCGA 50-14-1, where it says right here, and I took this right out of the law and out of the GMA handbook, any notes about, well, it didn't say whether they were, you know, whether you gotta go back and make everything factual. It just says, any notes about complying with specific legal procedures. These are the things here. Here's a list of what must go in the legal minutes. And, Mr. Attorney, I'm reading this from the Georgia law. And this is from GMA under best practice, and they actually quote the law. Here are the things that must go in the minutes. The day and time of the meeting, where the meeting is held, the type of meeting, the names of any members present at the meeting, including elected officials and staff, anyone who arrives late for a meeting, a description of each motion, our proposed resolution, the identity of anyone making or seconding the motion, and then any points of order, our appeals, and any notes about complying with specific legal procedures. Any recesses, and any council member who leaves the meeting early. All of these must be added to the minutes under the OCGA 5014-1.
Thank you for your comments, Councilwoman. Is there any further discussion from council? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, here's where we are. We are in the middle of passing and looking at some of the best times that we have here in Stonecrest. We're bringing on just this fantastic talent. We're moving forward with regards to paving our roads and getting our comprehensive land and making sure that we're handling the citizens properly, listening to them, having meetings, going out to the neighborhoods. And a big piece of where we are today is the development of the cornerstone of the city, which is economic development. Having said that, we've been able to enhance that department with regards to an individual in person that's a brand builder, an individual that can build alliances across various segments who's comfortable with international and diverse community, who has demonstrated his abilities to assess situations and develop strategies, you know, across the board. These are the things that we're need, that not only do we need now, we need them in the future. And I want to introduce this individual to council and the citizens that we have today. And I'd like for them to come forward, because this is how we introduce our new folks here in Stonecrest. And Mr. Clarence Boone, you come forward, please. Always a happy day for me when we can introduce superior qualified folks to add to the team that we have here at Stonecrest. I was advised to tell Mr. High Tower that he is a Kappa. Not an Alpha. Okay, Kappa. Just friendly fraternal jokes there, folks. All right, folks, we're gonna move to the second part of our presentation abilities here. A portion, we're gonna bring up a company that is looking to handle some business here in Stonecrest. And we wanted to have council and the general public and citizenry, of course, to get a chance to see the things that they want to bring and what we're looking at. Sir, if you want to come forward? Folks, there are a few times where I get introduced by people bigger and taller than I am. And Mr. Davis, from Capital Resource Services, thank you, sir, for coming out. And I appreciate you spending a few minutes with us.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks for having me. My name is Mark Davis and I have a couple of companies. One is Into Urban Solar, which is here in Atlanta. Our office is in East... The other one is WDC Solar. So we've prepared a presentation for you guys, and I'm gonna go through it. So I want to talk about solar. We, our parent company is located in Washington, DC. And we not only install solar, but we train young men and women to install solar systems, be a part of one of the fastest growing industries in the country. We offer solar installation training classes at no cost. We just finished one in East Point. And the group that finished the class in East Point, I took them to DC and they worked about it, right at a month up there, getting hands-on experience. We're working with a couple of municipalities in the area. We also work with Cherry Street Energy. They're local, they're in Atlanta. So what happens is that we can install a solar system at no cost to the city. We've done it in DC on schools, churches. Have a contract with District Sustainability Utility. Have contracts with the District Office of Energy and Environment. We've been doing this since 2009. So we really know how to train young men and women, get them off the street. We employ a lot of veterans, we employ turning citizens. We get them trained, get them out, and we put them to work. And it's, not only works for us, but it works for you. Because we're able to install solar on some of your buildings and significantly reduce your energy costs and your carbon footprint. We feel like moving forward, this is one of the safest ways to come back from climate change. You pay nothing upfront, we maintain the system, and and we make sure that it's up and running all the time.
Mr. Davis, hold on one second.
That's our job.
So that everybody's on the same page and we're fair to the gentleman. Look back in, go frame by frame. Sir, would you like for him to be your framer, or you'd like to do it yourself?
I can do it myself.
There you go. There you go. Go frame by frame. There you go, sir. All right.
Okay, good. So this is a group that we trained out of New York that you see on the picture here. So this is a picture of me with one of our trainees, and this explains who I am. Former NBA player, turned solar installer.
That's good.
So many of you know Bernard King, he's a Hall of Famer. He and I have worked together on some projects, solar projects in the past. Bernard is a very good guy. So, one thing, another thing that we did was, when I first started this company, we worked with the DC Office of Sustainability to create a program where we could install solar on low-income family homes at no cost. Date, we've installed over 500 systems, and these systems save low-income families money. So our mission statement is to create livable wage-paying jobs for local electricians, roofers, and solar technicians, engineers also. And to help families save money on their electric bills. And we have been doing this since 2009. So, want to move through some of our projects very quickly. This is a housing project at Kenner Work. They wanted new windows. We put a new solar system in, saved them enough money on their electric bills so that they're able to install. At this particular housing project, and we've done a number of housing projects, we're in the process of... Southeast Veterans Center, this is one of our projects. Fort Lincoln, this is the project that we're doing for DC Housing Authority. So we have three projects that we're doing for them right now. This is one of them. Fort Lincoln, Elvin's Road is another one, and Penning Caris is another. So, here in the state of Georgia, we're able to execute what's called a solar energy procurement agreement, a CEP. So we worked with Cherry Street Energy, as I said, here, and they were the first company in the state of Georgia to execute a CEP. And since then, they have a contract with the City of Atlanta to install. And we are also helping to make that 35% minority participation goal that they're looking for. Big group of guys over there, we enjoy. We just got back from Deco Island, where we did some operation and maintenance work on one of their... And, yeah, that's how it works. Basically, you sign an agreement with Cherry Street. Cherry Street will bill you for the energy that the solar system produces. The energy usually comes at about half of what you pay. It's a great bill. Proposed benefits, there's no upfront investment. That's the first thing. We use the tax credits and other incentives to get the system installed at no cost. We can give you a breakdown as to exactly how much you're going to save once we have the ability to take a look at your electric bill. So we take your electric bill, give them to analysts, and they'll go through and run them, and tell you how much you save over the lifespan. So, we did get a couple of addresses of the schools, and these are schools. And this is just a field scope of size systems that we can install on these locations. So in 2015, Green For All, which is Van Jones Group, named me a climate change champion, which was pretty special. We received a lot of awards, been on, you know, CNN Money. And this is the most important one. Invited by...
Yeah, that's good.
We, I actually worked with the president and his clean power, his team on his clean power plan for two years. He invited me to sit in the booth with his wife at his final State of the Union. We've had a lot of people who are very interested in what we're doing and what we're doing in the future. And we will continue to do that here. So I just wanted to be brief, but let you guys know that we're very interested, I mean, talking about how you should carbon footprint and also lower your energy.
Okay, so a couple of questions for you. I'll start, and then I'll pass it to council. You caught my attention when you said no charge. How does a no charge work?
So we use the tax credits and other incentives to buy down the cost of the system. And you're also paying for the energy that... But we're able to do that and install the solar system without charging you anything. And we do that, and just to show you how important the incentives are, in DC, we don't charge for energy, we give the energy away. So if I install solar on your schools in DC, you'll have that energy free. Because we have what's called the S-RAC market, and that is so good that we install solar at no cost, then we... Here, we will have to charge you for the energy, because Georgia does not have an S-RAC market. S-RAC, Solar Renewable Energy Credits, where you get credit for how much green energy you produce.
So Georgia does not have that?
Georgia does not.
And give me that acronym again?
S-RAC, Solar Renewable Energy Credit.
Counsel.
I mean, I watched your presentation, and I didn't see a lot about single-family housing. You do anything in that category?
So we do not here. We do not have the incentives available to install solar on low-income family homes at no cost. District government gave us $7,500 a home to install solar. So it was easy for us to get an investor to put up the rest of the funds so that we could get that, let's say, $15,000 system installed at no cost to the residents, because we own the S-RAC and the tax credits. And that allows us to buy down that system, give it to a low-income family at no cost. And we just want another contract from the district to do 60 more homes, it is, which is good.
Yes, question, who pays for the installation of the equipment on the buildings?
The individuals financing, which in this case, it would be Cherry Street.
So the entity would have to own the building, if you will. It would have to, let's say, for instance, if it was a schoolhouse, it'd be school board. If it's a city building, it'd be the city. If it's a church, could it be a church?
Yes.
All righty then. Okay.
There's a lot of church, and a lot of pastors.
I'm sorry, Councilman, I interrupt you.
No, you did.
Can you, give me a little deeper, not much, but just a little deeper, how Cherry Street, map that mentally out for me. Cherry Street, your organization, the city?
Basically, Michael Shannon, who's from Macon, Georgia, started Cherry Street. Basically, got investors together, and the investors came in, put money out, and you know, they get a 30% tax credit for every dollar they spend. So they'll get their money back, that incentive is any other incentive they have. My company, Into Urban Solar, I'm from Lapha, Georgia, by the way.
Near Lulawica? Near Lulawica?
Lapha.
Okay.
And Waycross.
I know where it is.
All right, all right. So I'm from Macon, so the other guy can't be half bad.
Oh, yeah. So they, so they have a contract with the City of Atlanta, they're installing solar on the city's buildings here. They're working with the City of South Fulton also.
Okay, counsel.
I've got a question. So when you were, when Councilman Turner asked about residential homes, you specifically mentioned low-income homes. So I'm not sure that his question was directly related to low-income versus just residential in general. So I just want to take that categorization, I want to take that out. Let's just talk about residential, not based on economic status. How often or what is your ratio for installing or providing systems to residential, to our residential community versus the commercial community?
We can install residential, but it'll be on a cash basis.
Okay, so...
Basically, we focus on commercial installation and low-income installation. We, you know, we don't do too many cash, residential cash markets. You know, you have to have a very good incentive package for the system to pay back over a given period of time. of time. There's just not enough market there for us to get into that market.
So, um, you're making this presentation to the city council. What is your idea of what the council can do, or what are you requesting that we do to support this? So, in City Stonecrest, the Cab County School District still owns, operates, and runs our school system. Means they own all the assets related to school buildings. City of Stonecrest has not yet purchased property, but obviously, we will over time. Um, so, right now, we can't help in that space, so I was just trying to figure out what space we can help in.
So, I wasn't aware that, that you didn't own...
Well, not, not, not right now.
We don't own any of the school buildings that we have.
Yeah. So, I guess this is, this is to, you know, warm you up to solar, maybe.
Right. Because we're not, we're not far off.
Right.
We're not far off.
No, we will most certainly own assets as a city. The school system is a totally different, and it looks like that's kind of where the bulk of your bang for your buck in, in your credit system is, but the school system is, well, will stay with the county for the foreseeable future unless the state legislature decides something different. So, the city will own buildings and assets of its own, which obviously is still not comparable to the amount of buildings that the county school system owns.
Right. That, that's fine. We're here, like I said, to, just ourselves, let you know that we're here, ourselves available. Time comes, have us come back, and rate it down.
Uh, what about parks? Um, where you have solar lighting and that, that particular thing?
Um, we'd have to take a look at it.
Yeah, okay.
And, uh, check out the electric bills to see, uh, make that work.
Because we do, we do own parks. Um, shortly.
And with some of the...
Real shortly, as a matter of fact.
Real estate, we could take advantage of it and give you, uh, a lease payment every quarter, releasing that land, all the solar system on it, that solar system on feedback to the grid.
Oh, okay. Now, you may have an idea. Alright, you stood there long enough until the guy...
Yeah.
That's how you take the heat from God.
Sure about saying that, little...
Um, not to interrupt you, sir, or the council, but I thought you had a, you have a second part? Uh, with this, or was this it?
Yeah, this is, this is what we're doing. I think there's some other guys with a second part, but, um, yeah, this is, this is...
Good deal.
We're solar.
Excellent, excellent. Counsel?
Thank you very much for having me.
Appreciate you, sir.
Appreciate your time.
Alright, and we'll, you and I follow up.
Sounds good.
Thank you, sir, alright. For sure, for sure.
And it's, uh, I did have, uh, you hands out.
Yes.
One hand out, it's okay?
Sure. No problem, no problem.
You can email me, and you can keep the hard copy. The millennial in me, the millennial in me. Send me the email, send me the email.
It's just, uh, another quick introduction. We actually, uh, met with you, um, around the beginning of Christmas, my partner and I, uh, we met, we talked, and, um, we brainstormed, um, told you we'll be coming back, so we, officially, just wanted to make another introduction and, and, um, bring back who we are. So, we are Capital Resource Services, and, uh, we're partnered with Construction Development Services, and, and Construction Development Services is the builder, um, that's a part of our conglomerate, if you will. So, I gave a couple of examples because, um, what we wanted to bring to your attention is, we've been talking back and forth about how we can bring our resources to the city a little better. The one thing about what we do, we, um, we have financing that's customizable, so we can finance probably up to a half a billion-dollar project. Couple of these are projects we're currently doing right now that we're 100% financing and we're 100% building out. So, we have a lot of private money that backs us in the projects we do. The, the only thing we have to do is to find the project, we take it before our group, they like it, they get behind it, don't need anything else but a green light to go forward with that particular project. Um, we have two extremes, we, and I'd say extremes because they're very different. The, uh, Our Community Live that we are currently, um, working through in another city is more technology-based, bringing a lot of more technology components. Uh, the second one is the Sycamore Project we're doing, and that's a lot more, uh, economic and affordable housing, uh, mixed with a lot of, uh, retail that we're building out as well. Both projects, uh, Our Community Live is, uh, north of 40 million. The Sycamore Project is probably going to end up around 130 million build-out. Um, our builder, Chris, has 20-plus years building out, doing developments from scratch, so we have a lot of experience in that. So, what we were wanting to do is to talk a little bit more with the city about how we can bring this resources more to specifically what you guys are looking for, because, because what we do is customizable, we're very fluid in how we can move. And, and, and part of what we wanted to do today is just to formally make that introduction and hopefully continue on, uh, with more in-depth conversations of how we can bring our resources to the city. Um, and even work with Mark in terms of adding, you know, the solar components to anything that we're, we're building out, uh, for the city.
Uh, this is Emily, sir, because, um, I'm going to, um, introduce you to a couple of folks. Uh, one is, uh, conspicuously walking over here on the side, his name is, uh, Robert Scott. Uh, he's, uh, he's working on a couple of large-piece projects for us.
Awesome.
That, um, uh, I'd like for you to have an introduction to. Um, and there's another individual gentleman that you and I talked about earlier that has made things closer with regards to where he's going to start that type of development. So, um, your, your, your timing is, your timing is also good. And also, um, my Economic Development Director, uh, introduced earlier, Mr. Clarence Boone.
Yes.
Make sure you touch both of them before you leave.
Alright.
But I want, uh, to open the floor to council so that they can, if they have any questions.
Wasn't meant to be confusing, it was only just meant to be a couple of different projects that, that, to, that we wanted to touch on, that we were thinking that we can actually duplicate here. But again, for us, we're customizable, so once we talk through it, it's just a matter of us finding a common ground and agreeing, and we can move it forward, we, we don't need much...
Right. No, your, your, your timing is, your timing is good. Uh, I'll also send electronically to council.
Yes.
And then, uh, we'll, um, we'll, we'll start to...
Understood.
Moves from there.
As long as we start the dialogue, this we're looking for, and we can formally get whatever we need to do from that point.
Thank you, sir, and we appreciate your time today.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright. Okay, um, council and, uh, audience, thank you very much for your patience. Um, I think it's, I think it's important when individuals want to come to Stonecrest and invest their money. We should hear about it, we should take a look at them, and you should take a look at them. So, uh, that's always going to be, you know, at the center of what we're doing. So, uh, from there, we'll move to, uh, public comments. Madam Clerk?
Uh, Saleem Damani. I'll move on.
Hold the name one more time, Madam Clerk?
I'll call him again at the end.
Okay.
Joel Thibodeau.
Good evening. Joel Thibodeau, 5429, Supoi Chase Crossing. Um, I came here to talk about summer and nuisances. Um, came up in the work session, but what did not come up in the work session over this past week, um, was the incessant fireworks going off everywhere, all through the city, all times of night. The ci- the state of Georgia, in their infinite wisdom, legalized fireworks some years ago without putting in the proper regulation as far as who could buy what, or, um, a number of other safety, um, laws that they could have put in place. And who can buy what is important because nowadays, um, unlike in other states where I live, where fireworks are legal, the average citizen could buy, can buy commercial-grade fireworks at a regular outlet. And so, during the day and during the night, you have extremely loud fireworks going off. And as I mentioned in a public comment I made online, it, this weekend sounded like 1983 Beirut at some times, because we have commercial-grade fireworks that are meant to be shot off hundreds of yards into the air in open areas for commercial reasons, those commercial presentations, being set off in residential neighborhoods at any point in time. And I believe that that is a hazard to the health and safety of our citizens. Although the state has not done anything, I do believe that the city and the local county government has some leeway in order to pass ordinances under the nuisance ordinance as to regulating who can shoot off what kind of fireworks and where. And I would like to see our city council take up, uh, something along those lines prior to the next fireworks season, which will be coming up, I believe, in, uh, for New Year's, around New Year's. Um, and so, that's what I wanted to mention, that, um, we saw a lot of activity on social media, local social media, uh, Nextdoor and Facebook, um, people thinking that these are fireworks. At one point in time, we had neighbors out on the street with their pets and small children because everybody was excited and afraid in their homes that something serious was happening because of the level of fireworks. Um, and so, that's for fireworks, and I just wanted to touch briefly on the motorcycles and motorbikes. This is a serious issue. We're not talking about onesie-twosie people driving on scooters. Um, there have been some nights on Covington Highway where I've seen dozens, packs of young people on these not-street-legal bikes with no headlights, causing serious issues for travelers and pedestrians. And I would really like our city government to take it up with the Cab County Police and have it addressed. Thank you.
Ms. Thibodeau, what was the first ordinance, what do you, what was the, um...
Fireworks.
Yeah, but you, you called, you called an ordinance, you called something, that somebody was doing something. Uh, you called like an ordinance, or you called like, it was already in place, or something we could look up?
Uh, no.
Okay, I misunderstood you, I'm sorry.
Nuisance, the nuisance ordinance?
Nuisance, okay, it's...
We should have one, but we, we, we were talking about revising it in the work.
Got it. Thank you, sir.
Davisha Johnson.
Ms. Johnson?
How are you all doing?
Alright.
Have handout?
Got to make it quick, three minutes.
So, I just would like to introduce myself and thank the council for allowing me to have this public comment. My name is Davisha Johnson, I'm CEO of DL Johnson Consulting Agency. Um, I'll just give you a quick 30-second rundown. I have, um, experience in education and architecture. I started at Morris Round College. I went on to Southern Polytechnic State University and studied architecture for four years. I did an additional four years at University of Houston in construction management, and I have a political science degree from Georgia State University, where I graduated in 2016. I started interning with the Georgia Legislative Black Caucus. I have run 20 political campaigns and have a large network in the African community, being from Winnipeg, Manitoba, Canada. I grew up around a lot of African population. There's a large population here in Georgia, so I would like to just discuss with you an opportunity for me to come back and present two proposals that I've already presented to Councilman Rob Turner and Councilwoman Diana Doma in concerns with already implemented, uh, departments from economic development, business development, community cultural affairs, and communications in regards to the Film and Entertainment Commission, as well as creating an Office of African Affairs, seeing that the city of Stonecrest is on the I-20 corridor that leads directly to the Savannah ports. I think it's important during this year of return, marking 400 years of slavery, that we take advantage of our African neighbors in the city of Stonecrest, as well as in the state of Georgia, and the opportunity for revenue generation around these different departments that you already have. I have read through the comprehensive plan developed by the collaborative firm, and I believe that my firm, in addition to our affiliate partners, could fill in some gaps in supportive services, as well as the Business Development Department, Economic Development Department, Community Cultural Affairs, and Communications. It currently have one person running an entire department of the 60,000-plus residents that you have. They need help, and I am here to offer my services for my firm to assist in all of these different areas. And like, as I said, um, I have a background in architecture and construction, so when we're talking about solar and who's going to pay for what, the city can also develop opportunities to have new construction, have, um, solar panels added as a tax incentive for people to buy a new home. So that, I have a lot of different avenues that I have allowed, uh, been afforded the opportunity to work with elected officials and running political campaigns, so I know what seats you all sit in, and how you got there, and the opportunities for you to stay in those seats, and also to help your residents be able to, right, right, right. Right. And then also for your residents to be comfortable with the fact that you'll be held accountable being in these seats for their tax dollars when you're spending money for the city council. So, I just wanted to say that, and I hope you give me the opportunity to come back and present to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. This talent flowing from Stonecrest, flowing.
Ms. Faye Cofield?
Uh, when I was here last time, there were some accusations made that need to be cleared up. First of all, I was accused of feuding with my neighbor behind me. What you have as your first article is a criminal trespass warning that was served on him in May of 2018 because he was insistent upon putting his garbage in my yard. And if you flip the page, you will see a photograph that that garbage was not just at the property line, but about 15 to 20 feet inside my property. And he was told, I moved it repeatedly, four times that particular day, and he continued to put it back. So, the letter is self-explanatory, and I'll say that in all the years I've been on this earth, I've never had to reduce a criminal trespass warning to writing. So, you have that. Second of all, I'm deeply concerned about this situation that's now developed with these trees, because I'm now being told that when I filled this complaint out on the 29th of August, which you have a copy of, that Stonecrest did not actually have code enforcement. But it remains unclear to me why they were handing out Stonecrest complaint forms. This form was filled out in the office, and it clearly shows the date and time that I came in and filled it out. I had been referred to you by the Cab County, so now the Cab County is going to take the complaint back, from what I understand, and they're going to start dealing with it. It's unclear to me how code enforcement could sit there for two years, for two years, and not know that they did not have the authority to investigate this and the other code enforcement issues that they investigated during this time period. Um, it, it's just, it's just beyond belief that that could happen. So, I, I don't know what to tell you other than to say that the pictures speak for itself. One of you says that it, you took it over on October 1st, the other one says it was taken over on September 15th. I filed an open records request, and I asked for everything. I was told that everything was given to me, but if you look at a, one of the separate pages that is there, there were apparently pictures taken from Google Earth from 2016 to 2017. Those pictures were not provided, and they will show that this was a heavily wooded area. So, I, I, I just don't understand how you can say that you have an effective code enforcement when they don't even know that they don't have the authority to investigate something. And if you look at the complaint, you will see that the complaint clearly states the timeframe I'm talking about. And also, I found out my neighbors are not... And also, I found out my neighbors are not selling wire, as they were accused of doing, that they are in fact contractors for one of the major cable companies. So it's a federal offense for them to sell wire. Thank you very much, and y'all have a good day.
Saleem Damani.
Oh, okay. Mr. Ferrell, if you don't mind, please, just see if he's standing outside, because I wouldn't want to miss him twice. And he misses opportunity to say something, and we, we want everybody to have their say. All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
That's all the comments that I have.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going to move to appointments. We have three, counsel. One, one committee and one person to two committees. I am, I think Mr. Boone is meeting with the possible opportunities outside. However, counsel, on appointments, number one, the East Metro CID Steering Committee. And the, number two, which is the Development Authority, those were the committees that Ms. Wright, Sabrina Wright, was sitting on as ex officio. And so Clarence Boone, who is now the Economic Development Director, will be sitting on, on those committees. So, Mr. City Manager, do you want them individual, you want them together, or how do you like to proceed? Okay. All right, then I'll, with counsel approval, I'll make the motion that we place our new Economic Development Director on the East Metro CID Steering Committee. Properly moved in second. All right, any further discussion?
Just have a question.
Yes, sir.
If it's ex officio, does it have to be voted in?
It has to be voted on, because even when we put the reg, just members on, period, we voted for that whole list, whole list of members, even, even Ms. Wright.
I'll cover it.
Did I want to, I want to make sure our processes are, are in line? All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right, number two, for the Development Authority, I move that Clarence Boone be on the Development Authority Board as ex officio also. Do I have a second? All right, properly moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you, counsel. Number three, the Stonecrest Overlay Steering Committee. Simply, folks, this is the reconstituting of the Steering Committee, led by Councilwoman Clayton and Councilwoman Rob Turner. The members of the Overlay Steering Committee has been reduced some because of the folks that we have here that are either representing city council or representing their clients, and we found it to be more efficient in this arena, and they also lead the different committees. Those committee members will be Councilwoman Clayton, Councilwoman Rob Turner, Attorney Michelle Battle, Ms. Jessica Wagner, Mr. Hampton, Attorney Bernard Knight, Mr. Christopher Wheeler, and Mr. Maurice Waddell. And I have those in writing for you, Ms. Clerk, Madam Clerk, so that you won't have to, you know, try to memorize them as it sits today. So with that, counsel, I'd like to move that we further our committee with regards to the Stonecrest Overlay Steering Committee. Do I have a second? Properly moved in second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Wheeler's position ex officio as well?
You know what? Mr. Wheeler's position is ex officio. Good, good catch. Yes, sir. That is correct.
Just one question for the city attorney. Staff is, are not voting members of these committees, right?
You asking me, or you?
I'm asking a question.
I don't see why they can't be, you're saying that staff can't be voting members? I don't see, if they're appointed, they can be, if they meet all the other criteria for appointment.
I have some further questions, and we don't have to deal with it now, but we had a committee where staff members could not vote, so I'm trying to get some consistency. Is this a different type of committee?
Well, I can just tell you right now, from the city manager's office, staff on any committees with elected officials, they're gonna be ex officio, period. They're not voting. I mean, the last thing I need is a staff member voting against one of y'all on some of these committees. It ain't gonna happen.
And that's, that's why all the staff members that are on, all, all of these committees are ex officio.
Okay, so for clarity.
If they're not, they should be.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, Julian, or Mr. Jackson, for clarity, ex officio means they're not voting, they are in the meeting, because I've served on a committee, and staff members were not voting members.
That's right. They're there for their expertise and input, everything but a vote.
Thank you, sir.
I mean, I don't know that it's illegal to have staff on a committee with elected officials. I'm just saying it's not a good idea, and I'm not gonna condone it, and I'm not gonna allow it, quite frankly.
I heard that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of the Stonecrest Overlay Steering Committee? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So enacted. Thank you, counsel. All right, we're gonna move into our public hearing for the comprehensive plan for 2038. Mr. City Attorney and Mr. City Manager, do we open a public hearing on this, this piece of it here?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm gonna take a motion from the council to open the public hearing for the comprehensive plan 2038.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we open the public hearing for the comprehensive plan for 2038.
All right, properly moved and properly second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Seeing none, the public hearing is now open.
That was Michael Hightower, the collaborative firm. I'm glad to be joined by Mary Darby, who for the last several months has led the effort on behalf of the city of Stonecrest for the update of, for the, for the city of Stonecrest's very first comprehensive land use plan. We are asking for this matter to be approved, and I, we hear speaking in favor of this matter. Certainly, we would love to hear if there are additional comments. Thank you.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, do we handle this as we do regular, or those are opposed and those are?
Against.
All right, all right. So having said so, I will take those public comments with regards to those who are in opposition of our comprehensive plan for 2013. Comprehensive plan for 2038. Go once, go twice. Seeing none, then I will take those that are in favor of the comprehensive plan for 2038.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Michael Hightower, the collaborative firm, along with Mary Darby and other staff, we, we in favor of the adoption of this plan.
Thank you, sir. Seeing none further, I will take a motion to close the public hearing. All right, so moved?
Second.
And properly second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Mr. City Attorney, do we take the vote for, for the comprehensive plans for the resolution in the old business, or we take the vote now? All right. Thank you, Mr. Julian.
Mr. Mayor, I got a quick question for Mr. Hightower. Mr. Hightower, what would be the process for making amendments? You may have answered this before, but my brain just shut down.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and fellow council members, Mary Darby, the collaborative firm. So to make amendments to the comprehensive plan, we would actually have to just study what that amendment would be, and do a text amendment after the plan is actually adopted, and then we would come back before city council. It would have to go on the city council agenda as well for public hearing, and then we would move from there.
Will it, will it be advertised, like, for a certain amount of days and then?
Yes, it would go through the same advertisement, public hearing process.
Okay, thank you.
I have just one clarity, and I'm not sure we need to make a footnote or not, and that is that this is stated as the first comprehensive plan.
Yes, sir.
That we have developed, but prior to that, we were operating off of the cap, on its comprehensive plan.
That is correct, but this is the first.
I don't want the impression to be given that we were functioning without a plan.
Right, so for correction purposes and for the public record, you were actually adopted and operating under the City of DeKalb comprehensive plan, but this is the very first, which will be, once we adopt it, the very first City of Stonecrest comprehensive plan 2038.
Yes, I know, and we've had that said before, that we don't have a comprehensive plan. We operate without a comprehensive.
Yes, you're operating.
We were borrowing someone else's.
That is correct.
Now we have our own, but we were not flying without one.
That is correct, and that'll be clarified as I read through the resolution during our next section. Ready?
Stay there.
Mary Darby, the collaborative firm.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
When we are making changes to the current ordinances, or the current zoning, rather, will we take the changes to the comp plan separately?
So, yes. So what you're operating under, as well, is the current, you adopted the DeKalb County zoning ordinance. So as you're making corrections to the ordinance, once you make those corrections, if they're not compatible with the comprehensive plan, either at that time you would amend the comprehensive plan, or you would come back through a separate text amendment to make sure that the compatibility between the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance are consistent.
Okay, so both of them will have to be taken?
Absolutely. Any more questions? Okay, Mary Darby, the collaborative firm, is honored to read the resolution for the adoption of the City of Stonecrest Comprehensive Plan 2038, and to declare an effective date. Therefore, whereas the City of Stonecrest, Georgia, the city, was created by Senate Bill 2008, passed in the Georgia's General Assembly during the 2016 session, the city charter, and subsequently confirmed by referendum. And whereas the city charter provided for a two-year transition period for the purpose of providing a time period during which an orderly transition of various governmental functions from DeKalb County to the city would occur. Whereas pursuant to Section 6.03E of the city charter, the city relied on DeKalb County's comprehensive plan during the transition period. Whereas on August the 7th, 2017, per ordinance number 2017-08-04, the city adopted the DeKalb County's Comprehensive Plan 2035, the 2035 Comprehensive Plan Land Use Concepts Map, the 2035 Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, the 2035 Comprehensive Plan Update Appendix with Land Use Parcel Maps, and the 2016 Comprehensive Land Use Maps as the comprehensive plan for the city of Stonecrest, Georgia. Whereas in 2018, the city retained the professional planning services of the collaborative firm to establish standards and procedures for the city to address immediate needs and opportunities for the city, while moving the city toward the realization of its long-term goals for the future. The firm ensured that the city comprehensive plan went beyond the minimum required plan elements, which are community goals, needs and opportunities, community work program, and broadband services element, to make the overall, overall plan a good fit for the city for the next 20 years. Whereas the collaborative firm ensured that the draft went beyond the rules of Georgia Department of Community Affairs, DCA, minimum standards and procedures for local comprehensive planning, Chapter 110-12-1, as called for by the Georgia Planning Act of 1989, and was approved by DCA and the Atlanta Regional Commission on February the 14th, 2019, for meeting the minimum standards and procedures. However, whereas the city of Stonecrest requested a second review by DCA and ARSC due to minor revisions made to the draft Stonecrest Comprehensive Plan 2038 prior to the adoption by the city. Whereas the review of the revised Stonecrest Comprehensive Plan 2038 received a letter of conformance from DCA and ARSC on June 5th, 2019, which met the June 30th, 2019, DCA deadline for the conformance to the minimum standards and procedures for local comprehensive planning. Whereas attaining DCA-qualified local government status is contingent on local adoption of the revised Stonecrest Comprehensive Plan 2038, in which, once adopted, will allow the city to impose development impact fees, make the city eligible to participate in certain DCA programs, like the Community Block Grant Program, CDBG, local, the Loan Guarantee Section 0108 program, the Local Development Fund, and allow the city to participate in programs administered by other state departments, like the Georgia Department of Natural Resources. Whereas the approved revised Stonecrest Comprehensive Plan 2038 may move forward for adoption by the city, and whereas the, according to the city charter, Senate Bill 2008, and the mandates of DCA and the City of Stonecrest Comprehensive Plan 2038, I mean, yeah, 2038, shall be adopted at a minimum of every five years. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Stonecrest, Georgia, hereby adopt the City of Stonecrest Comprehensive Plan 2038 as prepared by the collaborative firm and approved by DCA and ARSC to serve as the city's direction for long-range planning for the future of the city. This resolution shall become effective upon your adoption. Mayor and city council members, will you please adopt the City of Stonecrest first comprehensive plan prepared by the collaborative firm? Thank you very much. Any questions?
All right, so let's do this first. I move that we adopt the comprehensive plan for the 2038 for the resolution, and so read by Mary Darby. Do I have a second?
I second it.
All right. Any questions or further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? I didn't know that you had that in you, Ms. Darby. I didn't, I didn't, there was some different, there's some different stuff going on, I was, that I didn't, that I didn't expect. But, uh, 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 folks, the reason that she is so happy, and that we are so happy, is that we now have a solid, brick-steady roadmap of where we are and where we're going. And no one from this point forward can look at us and say, well, you don't even have a plan. Yes, we do. And a very good one at that. All right, and we, we certainly want to thank the collaborative firm for its tremendous amount of work, but particularly Mary Darby, the queen of programs, yeah. There she is. All right, don't go away, collaborative, we still, we get some else for you. All right, so we'll move to new business. The Hotel Motel Tax Ordinance for our first reading.
An ordinance to implement Title 48, Chapter 13, Article 3, Section 51B of the Official Code of Georgia annotated, excise tax on rooms, lodgings, and accommodations, and to provide for the collection by operator, to provide for administration, to provide for an effective date, and for other purposes.
Okay, that is classified as our first reading. All right, our second reading will be at the next, next city council meeting, July so-and-so. Yes.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. Excellent, good deal. Counsel, that was the first reading for our Hotel Motel Tax Ordinance, madam.
We received the final version. Our packet says that we would get it today.
We got it. I believe I emailed it out on Friday, but I can resend it to you. I do have the final version, and I sent it to City Attorney Denmark to review it as well, just to make sure that everything's okay with it.
I don't have it.
All right, no worries, good deal, okay. All right, so first reading so read, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, number two, the zoning ordinance services that we talked about with regards to the Collaborative Firm. Counsel, I'm gonna move that we adopt the, um, the zoning ordinance services, I'll move forward with the zoning ordinance services from the Collaborative Firm that we had a presentation on earlier today. Uh, do I have a second? All right, um, properly moved, and second, any further discussion? Yes, ma'am?
I have a question, a couple of questions about the contract specifically, but before we get into that detail, just want to verify that it's, the contract has been through the checklist, or the imaginary checklist of personnel? So it's been through city manager, city attorney, internal auditor, procurement office, that all of those have been checked off the list?
Actually, almost none of those have been checked off the list. And, and, and again, I guess what my thinking is, is, you know, the contract's presented for you guys to consider. And if you guys don't want to consider it, you know, I don't want to spend a lot of money, you know, getting attorneys and folks to review it. You know, but in the case where you do want to consider it, and you, you know, you do feel like, you know, it's something that you're willing to adopt, well, then the city attorney can, you know, review it subsequent to, to the presentation and your vote, and, uh, and, you know, the mayor, whoever, wouldn't execute it until it's been approved by everybody.
So we've kind of been down this road a few times, just about every meeting that has a contract on it. So it kind of doesn't make sense to set it up that way, because the motion is usually made to adopt what's in front of us. So to adopt it, I guess if that was the precedent that we understood, I'm sure the motion would be much different than, would you approve? No, what you said is, if you'd like to move forward with it, then we'll send it through the chain. But the motions are never stated that way.
Right.
It kind of doesn't make sense that that would be the precedent that we're following.
Well, uh, again, we can do this any way you guys want to. And, uh, you know, we can hear from, um, the collaborative group, and you guys can say, all right, send the contract to the attorney and all of those other folks, and, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll take it up at the next meeting.
So.
We have this conversation every meeting.
Yeah, but, so let me, let me, let me, let me get past this this time. Hold on a second. Because, uh, Mr. City Manager, you've read the contract?
I, I wouldn't say I've read every word of it, no, sir. Uh, but I'm familiar with generally what they're doing, and I know when they're gonna want to get paid.
Okay, uh, so, and that's the thing that matters.
Yes, sir.
I've read the contract. You've sent the contract to council members, right?
Yeah, the contract went out in packet.
Okay, it's five pages, not 50, all right? So, having said that, we agree in our budget from even last year how we were going to pay this, so this is no grand secret as to where we're going and what we're doing. Um, so I'm a little confused as to, um, and again, I can, I'll, I'll go with the will of council, but I'm, I'm, I'm confused why we wouldn't move forward on something that we've already seen and, and agreed upon, so.
So let me answer first. I have seen it and read it, and I, so I actually have some very specific questions about the contract itself, hoping that either the attorneys or the internal auditor would have caught these and asked these questions before we did. But also, what I do remember from the budget, and maybe we can pull it up and get some clarity, is that we did talk about, um, having an economic development plan for the later, latter part of the year, which was roughly estimated to be about a hundred grand.
Okay.
This doesn't seem to be an economic development plan, more of a zoning implant, zoning ordinance, which is not the same as what we budgeted for. Unless I'm mistaken, which is possible, because we did do the budget like a year ago, what we talked about was the latter part of the year having a economic development plan for a hundred grand roughly, not planning and zoning, professional service being provided by Collaborative. So, that's to answer that one question about, did we know about this and have we talked about this? Did, but this seems to be a different plan than what we talked about in the retreat. But also, if we do want to dive, I was trying to save time by not diving into the intricacies of the contract by just asking, has the internal auditor seen it, and has the attorney seen it? If we want to play that out now, we can, I do have questions, but some of that could be resolved through contract negotiations with our city staff. And then we wouldn't have to spend time doing it. But I definitely can, because you know my first question is about how the vendor decided you would get paid in two separate budget years, right?
Sure, okay.
If, if we prefer to go down the staff route first, I don't want to spend, I don't want to take our time doing that, doing this, if that's the route we're gonna go down.
Well, I want you to, 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 to answer, so to answer your question, uh, Councilwoman, I appreciate that. I, I do recall seeing this being specifically for the budget, and it's split with regards to how, um, unless I'm wrong, Ms. Hightower, and I'm, and certainly I could be, but that's what I thought, the one we were splitting with regards, you know, to that. But more specifically, Councilwoman, as we sit today, I am, um, more than happy to go down any red hole right now. And because what ends up happening is that we can clear this as we sit today, and then if we need to go back to the internal auditor and the city attorney, I'm okay with that. But if we're talking about it now, we can talk about it now. But I'll take the pleasure of counsel.
And, and your sir.
Sure.
Madam Mayor, Ms. Cobble, let me first of all say, obviously, it's, it's your pleasure to do as you choose, be it tonight or a future, future meeting. Uh, Ms. Cobble, but for clarification, uh, this was discussed during the budget season. Madam Clerk, can you go back and pull the records from Mr. Michael Harris? Uh, Mr. Harris suggested that we hold up on this particular item, not the ED plan, on the zoning ordinance until the comp plan was adopted. That was see, that was said on the record, so I, I would, just, just to make, to make sure that, I would.
Let me just address that, I do remember the conversation being, I'd go back and, and, and adjust the zoning ordinance, most certainly. What I don't remember is that we've budgeted, through our budget retreat, for that service to be provided by a firm, by a separate firm. So yes, the conversation most certainly did happen.
Like, I'm just saying for clarity, it was, the, it was specifically for the zoning ordinance, not for, there were two discussions held, one was for the ED plan, talked that.
Right.
One was for the zoning ordinance, but Mr. Harris said, at that time, we had, there were several correspondents, anything in this, in this, in the meeting of this body, uh, let us, uh, uh, do the zoning ordinance following the adoption of the comprehensive plan. That was very specific, and, and that was specifically only about the zoning, it was not about the ED plan. I'm just saying that for the record, if you pulled the tape, that's on the tape.
Right. I was saying. That we put it in the budget.
Okay, Mr. Harris, uh, uh, what, what Mr. Harris said, he said, Michael, I didn't put in the budget, let's, let's deal with that after the, after the company is adopted. He did not.
So we, right, so we did not budget for this, in this budget year, because we were waiting for the comp plan to be adopted.
Well, I asked Mr. Harris to put in the budget, he did not. He said, let's wait till the company is adopted.
Okay, right, well, that's, that's the only thing I wanted to clear up with you, Mr. Mayor, was we did budget for the ED plan. We did not budget for the planning and zoning plan, let's just call it that for a second. Because we were waiting on the comp plan to be adopted. So that's the only thing I wanted to make sure we were absolutely clear about, that when you look at the budget today.
You are correct.
ED plan is funded.
Okay.
This service is not funded today in the budget. That doesn't mean we can't afford it. What I'm saying is, it has not been budgeted for, which is why it's important that it goes through the internal auditor, the city manager reads it closely, and the attorney, to make sure that if we have not allocated funds in this budget for it, that we, the council, are aware that the money is available, where it's coming from, since it's not already designated in the budget, and that it's clear for us, the revenue source, to fund this project.
Okay, then I stand corrected. Because I thought for sure that, um, when I read our, uh, budget notes, it said, you know, 55 for this year, 55 for next year, or something of that number, um, but.
That was the ED plan.
Right, and, and, and.
Was that ED plan, or was that this plan?
Well, uh, uh, ED plan, I don't, I don't, that was not over two ye, over, over two payments. Mr. Harris was gonna put in the budget, he said he did not get a chance to put in the budget, for this particular piece, so, so specifically speaking, it's not in the current budget. Now, part two to your question, uh, since we are mid-year along, what we've done in, in, in other places, when, when we've done mid-year, we've said we can spread, spread the payment over two years, and that can, that can be, and that's a policy decision from a payment perspective, that's the answer to you, sir.
All right, then, um.
I think I'm.
Okay, so Councilwoman Cobble, uh, if you will allow me, please, uh, then I'll, I'll go, you know, from counsel from there. Uh, again, as I stated, then if that's the case, Councilwoman, I stand corrected, and I'm wrong, I apologize. Uh, I was reading under, I thought it was the, um, uh, the ROP plan was funded, but I thought because of that, or some other expenses, that we would be splitting this payment between this year and 2020. If that is not the case, third time, I stand corrected, and then we'll do it this way. And then, uh, Councilwoman Cobble, I'll go back to what you mentioned earlier, uh, which I'm trying to follow your, uh, good logic on it from here. And Mr. City Manager, I don't want another contract to bleed out of this town, to make the agenda, to do squat, until each one of these people read it, that man has seen it, and he has checked off on it. I do not want to be sitting up here on the dais, wondering whether or not, who's gonna say what. It's unprofessional. So we can either make it policy, or we can go exactly what Ms. Cobble said, Councilwoman Cobble says, see we're down this road again. Now, I don't want to go down this road again, so since we're already on this street, this is what we are going to do. We're gonna take this back between you, city manager, and the city auditor. You all are gonna get your act together with this, and then you're gonna bring it back to us. Am I clear?
Absolutely.
Now, having said that, open for counsel.
Well, that pretty much covers what I had to say, I was gonna recommend that we defer this until we get a better handle on it, because we just, 15 minutes ago, approved the comprehensive plan, and we're about to barrel right into this, and it might be the best thing ever, but we gotta make sure that we're doing it correctly. So to defer this, a meeting or two will satisfy my concerns.
Okay.
Okay, um, Mr. Mayor, do I have a floor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Mr. City Attorney, this question is specifically for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just read some of the notes that goes back to some of my notes, where I've made several requests and motions for this council to put in place a comprehensive contracts and procedural manual. I know you're very familiar with those conversations. And, um, so I just want to know, because we wouldn't have this problem today with, um, Mr. Hightower and his firm, who's done a wonderful job on the comprehensive plan. If we had put in place a comprehensive contracts and procedural manual, and one other thing I want to add, what that does, that gives us a fair process across the board with any contract, we would go through that particular vetting process, and the conversations we're having now would likely not be being had. We would have went ahead today, and we could have cast a vote and been through with it, if we had that comprehensive, not a, and as I mentioned with the purchase, with the procurement officer, we're looking at something that's comprehensive, that will address every type of contract that comes across, uh, this council's desk for approval. I want to go on the record officially now, recommending again that the advice and the, and the motions that I've made, and all the emails that I've sent asking for that manual to be put in place, there needs to be a sense of urgency. So, Mr. City Attorney, this is to you. I'm asking you to take a look at what may already exist. There are some manuals out there, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, and it doesn't have to be 200 pages long. But we do need something that would allow this council to look at it, and in all fairness to Mr. Hightower and his firm, this conversation would not be being had if we had that.
If I may, since you addressed that to me, Councilwoman Adoma, it was your pleasure, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
The last time this issue was raised, and you correctly pointed out, Councilwoman Adoma, it was addressed to the procurement officer and the city manager, and it was my understanding that, uh, they were going to move forward in that direction. Uh, and so I have not taken any action in deference to the city manager and the procurement officer, and I will continue to defer to them unless the council directs me otherwise.
If you could just follow up on that, it would also help us mitigate any future liability from the perception of unfairness with, um, the awarding of the contracts. Uh, we still are subject to the state and the federal laws. Even though we have our own local laws, we're not, um, exempt from following those other laws, as you know, Mr. City Attorney. So anything you can do to help, um, speed up the process, if they need help with the verbiage, if you can take the ball and run with that.
I'm, I'm happy to help however I'm asked.
Uh, Ms. Hightower, um, no, I, I just want to apologize to you, this is on me. This, this, good or bad, you're the top of the hill, it's on me. Uh, so with that, uh, we're gonna correct this, we'll have it together by next meeting, uh, because, uh, this, this is vital to what we do. Uh, and there are some, um, uh, things that, um, I think Ms. Cobble, you know, correctly pointed out, and that's fine.
It's yours pleasure.
Yeah, and, and, and thank you. So, uh, with that, um, uh, we're able to, um, you know, put this process in place. And then we'll, uh, move forward from there.
May I offer a substitute motion?
Yes, ma'am.
To defer, uh, the. Sorry, I'm trying to look for the. I'd like to offer a motion to defer the zoning ordinance for professional services um, with the Collaborative Firm for the July 22nd council meeting.
So moved, do I have a second? So moved and properly second, any further discussion?
Uh, just one question, is it possible that, um, I know that's, what, two weeks out? So I'm wondering, is it possible, um, counsel, that we can, um, maybe even if possible, have a call meeting to address this, whether or not we wait to, wait two weeks out?
I wouldn't have a problem with that, but we need to make sure that since it's over a certain dollar amount, it's gotta be procured correctly, so because it's over 25,000, it needs to have at least two competitors to submit.
Not for this particular one.
Not this one.
One.
Because this is on the, this is on the Jacobs, and we've already contracted with this particular.
Yeah, Ma, Mayor, if I may, uh, and first of all, this is absolutely on me, this is not the mayor's fault, this is completely 100% on me, I didn't take full responsibility for it. Uh, and second thing is, we probably are gonna need two weeks to, to dot the i's and cross the t's, get all the things that Ms. Cobble mentioned that we need to get done, done. Uh, and, and again, I apologize, uh, this, this thing kind of came in a little bit late, and I, I thought you guys were a little bit more familiar with this than, than I think you are. But, but, but by the same token, I think we can get where we need to be by the 22nd, for sure. And, uh, I, I pledge I will do that, or collapse heading in that direction.
Mr. Tippett, if you'll double-check this, this process, the current contract says it's between the City of Stonecrest and Collaborative. So if it's an extension to the existing contract with Jacobs, and that would amend the Jacobs contract, not set aside a separate contract. So we gotta go a different route, if this is an extension to your current services.
It's with Jacobs.
So we're gonna need two weeks.
Yeah, definitely.
Mr. Tippett, I appreciate you getting in the middle of this. No, 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 no. Not now.
It's two weeks.
Yes, in two weeks, in two weeks. Okay, uh, uh, it's been properly moved and, and, and seconded and discussed, all in favor for the deferral?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, counsel. Mr. Turner, the master transportation resolution.
Yes, um, at the last meeting, we had a presentation from the Collaborative Firm in reference to, uh, the comprehensive, well, not comprehensive, but the master, uh, transportation plan for DeKalb County. And prior to that, we had had some conversation, all requests from individuals within the community that the City of Stonecrest take a position as to what type of mass transit we wanted to see coming to the city from either directly from downtown Atlanta, or from some other, uh, connection points to the inner city, across town. And, uh, we put together a transportation committee to discuss it, and, um, bring in citizens from throughout the city to have input. And we did, um, come up with one recommendation that never made it to council, because it was in conflict with what some of the others were pushing us to, um, bring forth to the council. And we let it lie, because we had a deadline for the consultants to bring their recommendation to the city council. And then that recommendation has come to the city council, and to all of the other cities, and to DeKalb County, I do believe. Uh, DeKalb County is on the verge of making a decision on the master transportation plan. And all of the cities, I believe, I haven't confirmed it, but I've been told that all of the cities except for Stonecrest have taken a position as to how they feel about the comprehensive study, and its recommendation, and its list of projects. And we've been asked, as a city, if we will chime in and take a position as a city to support the other cities, uh, in reference. and take a position as a city to support the other cities, uh, in reference to this master plan. And they sent us a template, and the template basically outlines the points that the study brought forth, and that is that the projects or the referendum, if it gets to a referendum, as to what would be on the each proposal for a zero penny, uh, increase, which would not require referendum, or half a percent, or half a penny increase as a certain project list, and for a full penny, there is a project list. And, and neither one of those, um, lists do they speak of heavy rail coming directly from downtown Atlanta to Stonecrest via South to Cab, which is what some had suggested. It had been pointed out that it was just too, too costly to make it happen. But those are the numbers, and, uh, they've been supplied to, uh, the public. They've been supplied to the council members and to all of the other municipalities to take that information, and if they will or would support a resolution to pass on to the, uh, the Cab County Board of Commissioners to support our position. And I have that, and it came from our deputy city manager, who was promoting that, um, resolution, and asked us, we could get it passed tonight if we can. Uh, you have a copy of it. I did email a copy to you, uh, either last week over the weekend. So, hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at it, and it's before us now to decide if we will support it or not. And Mr. Hightower, you wanted to add something?
Uh, Councilman George Turner, uh, just briefly, uh, VHB, I think, presented to you. Grady Smith was here at your last meeting about this matter. And, uh, although I wasn't here, one of my staff members was here. Very briefly, tomorrow morning, uh, Grady and I will be before the DeCap Commission for the first reading of, uh, of, uh, of a resolution before the board to at least accept the general findings of the study. Uh, the final vote will, should, is scheduled to come up on July twenty-third. So, tomorrow morning is first reading. Uh, we'll be at the, you'll see the morning, the second final reading is July twenty-third. And, uh, with that first reading, it's gonna lay out everything you, you just talked about. And, uh, uh, no, uh, no additional resources, as you mentioned, the state of good repair, just basic of a good repair, and other enhancements is option one. Option two, one-half penny. Option three, uh, uh, is, is, is a full penny with the light rail, uh, going to, uh, Westy Chapel with the, with the potential of going into the city of Stonecrest at Penola Road. And of course, the, the existing policy of Marder was heavy rail to Stonecrest. So, there are four options that was in the final recommendations. And I think what you say, you are, you are absolutely correct. Each of the other cities have adopted a resolution to say, let's move forward with, with, with some support for the, for the DeCap Transit. So, you are, you are dead on it, and I would certainly appreciate y'all's consideration of your resolution, sir. Did I answer your question, sir?
Good day. Um, I know it's getting late and you don't have a whole lot of time, but I'm gonna try to run through these right quick. There are five, uh, points that they wanted us to support. One was that, uh, the elected body agrees with the process used to develop the transit master plan. The elected body generally agrees with the list of transit projects generated by the planning process. The elected body requests that the cities within the Cab County have a formal role in determining the project priorities of the transit master plan. And four, the elected body requests that the cities work closely with the county on timing and communication for any public vote on funding for the plan. And the last one is, the elected body requests that a project oversight team be developed to monitor progress of the transit master plan implementation, and that the cities have representation on the oversight team.
Okay, um, Councilman, um, George Turner, um, myself, Mrs. Turner, along with the collaborative firm, um, we've seen just about any configuration that you could think of, uh, with regards to transit. Um, learned a lot from, uh, Councilman George Turner, uh, about transit period, even with the Minneapolis? When the Minneapolis is seated, the different configurations and everything. What I like about, um, what is being presented here, uh, council, is that, um, the first, the first one that was presented to us by some unnamed sources to Councilman Turner, and I, this is a far cry from, um, putting, if I may use the term, the rope around our ankles, if you will. I, 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 I'll say that. And what this does, it's, um, it's general enough so that we can follow the process with the county and their partners, but specific enough, um, um, to know that we can get some things done without pinning us to light rail, heavy rail, BRT. It doesn't do, it doesn't do any of that. So, um, with that, counsel, that's, uh, and I've seen a couple, three of these. I thought this was the, the best one that I've seen.
Mr. Mayor, in conclusion, and thank you, Ms. Councilman George Turner, one of the things that, uh, came out of the, this whole process, and Mr. Turner was very involved with that, was that there are only two heavy rail construction projects right now growing in the country, only two. Dulles, Airport, and Manhattan. Uh, everywhere from Charlotte to, uh, Seattle to Portland, uh, uh, many other places. Light rail, for a variety of reasons, has been the, uh, the mechanism that has provided, uh, uh, for rail throughout the country. Again, so I think, uh, one of the proposals to full pennies, Mr. George Turner knows, has an option to get it to Stonecrest. So, that is a real possibility, but only two current heavy rail construction projects are taking place in the country. Uh, so, again, I think, uh, uh, I think Mr. Grady Smith, last, at the last meeting, gave several examples of where light rail is being successfully prepared. So, I do think at the end of the day, where I can speak for the, the Cap VOC, uh, they are, they are in receipt of those, Mr. Turner, as you know, those examples where light rail has been successful throughout the country. And we think that's a viable option, should finally be available to get to the city of Stone.
I don't think it specifically addresses whether it's gonna be light rail, heavy rail, um, BRT. This is just basically saying that we generally support the process, and we are supporting our system, cities, and, uh, the city and the county moving forward with this.
You're correct. But I want to make sure that you guys know, and the citizens know, that we took y'all's concerns very serious with that DeCap Transit master plan, looked at a variety of options to get where we need to be.
All right, having said that, then I will take a, uh, motion for the adoption of the resolution. Uh, properly moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Properly moved and second. Um, any further conversation? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passes. Thank you, uh, Councilman Turner and Turner. Councilman Turner, again, uh, real estate modification.
Um, real estate modification, I've been, uh, contacted by several people in reference to our closing of the property at Salem and Evans Mill. And, um, there was some concern expressed that we didn't get a chance to, um, see it for the final closing. And this is all, uh, we're looking for, is that when we have a negotiation, be it real estate, and it's what we're, uh, uh, appointed to now, but it could apply to other matters as well, such as our, um, intergovernmental agreements, uh, whatever. Whenever there's a, a negotiation, we trust that we'll get the best deal we can, uh, from our negotiators. But at some point, we probably need to see it, if it reaches a certain threshold, uh, before it is finally closed. And that was a discussion that we wanted to bring to the table. And, uh, Mr. Attorney, I'm not sure if there's some document that already addresses that, that something needs to be perked, uh, tweaked, rather, that, uh, we could turn to?
Um, so this would require that you see it, um, in executive session?
Well, uh, and this particular one is real estate. So, I think in real estate, it probably would have to come to at least executive session, if not to an open session. Uh, that's why we suggested, uh, executive session, because it's specifically here speaking of real estate matters.
W- without a doubt, um, you know, Councilman, you can certainly adopt a formal policy in that regard, um, or you can just instruct the staff to, to make that happen.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand that. What I'm, uh, asking you is something already in place that we don't have to reinvent the wheel, um, that we can, uh, tweak a little bit, uh, might already address this.
Uh, I'm not, not that I'm aware of, but, um, um, I've not seen this requirement. And, and it's, it's a fine thing to do, um, but I've just not seen it elsewhere. And that just might be because of, you know, I, I get around, but I don't see everything.
Okay.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, there's laws in the state of Georgia governing what cities, how cities will buy land. I mean, you know, in other words, there's rules and laws that cities have to follow to buy land that you and I as individuals don't necessarily have to follow. And I, I, I feel certain those were all followed in this transaction where we purchased that property.
Right, but I, I think the councilman was talking about something a little bit different.
Well, and, and, yeah, and, and, uh, again, generally, the purchase of property by a city will take longer, be more hand wringing, more meetings, more discussions about it than what you guys had, just on, that, that I've seen, you know, I, I wasn't here, but, uh...
Yeah, that was...
Relative, relative to, you know, you'd be sitting in executive session, you know, looking, probably, looking at an appraisal and talking about, you know, how much do you want to pay for this piece of land, whatever, what have you, uh, that type of situation, where it would just, uh, things just wouldn't happen quite as fast.
There was a certain amount of urgency with this particular piece of property, and I think we may have gotten a little bit ahead of ourselves on some things. But we just want to put something in place to make sure that there are checks and balances, that we all get a chance to, um, offer our opinion on it before it's fully closed out, that's all.
Well, I have no problem with that. However, only difference of opinion that I have, and that's all, it's just difference of opinion, uh, on that certain matter, I agree with you, uh, Councilman, that we had to, um, and you know, you know the details of the, of the matter. We had to act, um, expediently, um, to make things happen. However, um, I, I disagree with us having the notion that we may have gotten ahead of ourselves, because we had to make a decision on if there was gonna be a gas station, or if it was gonna be a park. Um, and we had the good fortune of the city of being able to make it a park. Because if now, if you look, uh, you can look this up easily, the land is for sale two miles from the land that we bought. Um, so we bought eight-point-nine acres for three-fifty, as public record, there's no, there's no secret. Eight-point-seven acres is for sale, two miles from it, for two-point-three million, right now. Same zoning, same piece, same everything. So, I thought that we got a timely deal as to where we were going and what we were doing. I'll give you another example. Let's just put the cat out where the bag is. As we sit today, go down Clonite Mall Parkway, on that corner, you see that little corner there where they have, uh, land for sale there? On the three mi- on the three acres there? One-point-two million. And I know for a fact that folks that are trying to negotiate just their little plot of land, that they can have something at the mall itself, a half a million an acre. All C1, all commercial related. So, I just said that to say, uh, and of course, you know, no disrespect to you, Councilman, you know, we had to do what we had to do to get things going. We got a monster of a deal for what we paid for and what we are acquiring here in, in, in the city of Stonecrest. And, and we had to act expediently, um, to be able to make that, that opportunity happen. So, I said that to say, Councilman, and I'll pass the mic back to you. Uh, I don't disagree with whatever extra thing that makes people feel comfortable, um, because we process in a different way, each of us, based on, you know, experience and, and the things that we have. You process zoning and these other, uh, items five times faster than I do. I have to hear it two, three, four times to make sure it's sinking. Uh, for me, real estate, this is what I do. So, I'll process it, you know, a little faster, but I want to, I want to, I want to pass it back to you.
Uh, you know, we're not debating, you know, the cost, uh, anything. What we're looking at is the process, so it's that it can always be the same process, and all the checks and balances are in place, that, uh, nothing can be questioned, you know? And that's, that's the thing that as a city, we have to make sure that we have those stopgaps in place.
Uh, and I agree with you one-hundred percent, and I'd like to ask counsel a favor, please. Um, and, uh, again, this is a favor, not a requirement. Uh, whether you all realize it or not, there are people still mad because we're the city of Stonecrest, and they are still digging and dragging the hole, trying to jump in the crater to find out, oh, those guys at Stonecrest, they're the devil's walking. They actually bought real estate, Joel. How could they possibly do that? They got trees they didn't even see about. They're gonna buy real estate. So, I just said that to say, if you would kindly, because I'll do the same and pass it to you, this is what I do for a living. So, if the newspaper is gonna call you, no matter who it is, regardless still, what about this deal y'all got done? For just this instance, can you all have them talk to me? Because I know what I'm talking about. And don't let them twist you up into something shady has happened, or that something, it's gonna be a big explosion in Stonecrest. None of that nonsense is gonna happen. They're looking for this, and they're turning every rock and stone. They look at us to go, I told you them jokers couldn't have a city. So, let's not let that happen. Let's not let that happen collectively for us as mayor and council, but more importantly, the people that are sitting out here that are spending their good time and energy watching us conduct business and being part of the process. That's all I'm asking. I'm asking that as a favor, when it comes to that particular piece of it, because they are looking to drag us down the rat hole, uh, for us to be on the news over some nonsense. And we don't deserve that. We don't deserve that. Um, this is my point, but, Councilman, I took the floor from you, and, um, the, 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 the...
Now, we, um, brought this up...
It'll come to conversation.
Well, you know, discussion only. And, uh, it, I thought it worthy of discussion that we put stopgaps in place. I said, we cannot be, if you, if you are questioned, answers are readily available with no ambiguity.
Yes, sir. I agree with you one-hundred percent.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I got a question...
Yes, ma'am.
For the city attorney. Um, just wondering if, if we, as a council, which I agree with George Turner, that we need a policy in place, but we do need four votes to make that happen. Um, just wondering on that particular piece of real estate, if, um, if we do a policy that we can request that disclosures are made on regarding the payment of real estate commissions? And also, I guess my question is, why would we need, um, to pay commissions if no one found the land? And I'm sure there may be a reason why, but we didn't need anyone to find the land. We knew where it was, but seems to me all we needed was a closing attorney and, um, to just move forward and go ahead and, and buy it. I'm not opposed to buying land, I just, I just don't understand that. So, wh- why did we, why couldn't we just use a closing attorney?
I certainly don't know, Councilwoman. I think, uh, um, as relates to whether or not you can get the information as it relates to the closing real estate commissions and things of that nature, I'm not certain that you need a, a policy, that we need to enact a policy, uh, to do that. I think you can get that information now, um, as, to specifics as to why we used a real estate agent as opposed to simply a closing attorney. I don't know why the city, uh, did that. I don't know who made those decisions and why they made those decisions. And as I said, I'm not sure that, that they made those decisions. I'm taking your word for the fact that that's what happened, um, because I was not, uh, involved in that process, and so I can't really speak to why we did what we did.
Okay, and I just want to back up and say that if we move forward and have a further discussion, which I think we should, I highly recommend it, that, um, on that particular property, just so you know, there were two, um, real estate agents who, I believe, and I'm gonna say I believe, we see, I've bought several homes in my lifetime, including the one I'm in now. And, um, the, the two real estate companies were, I mean, the two realtors, I suppose, were lit, real estate companies were listed, but there were no names, and I've never seen this before, but I don't know anything about, you know, how that all works with every, with the city. But there were no names of individuals who received the commissions, and I'm not aware of many cases like that. So, I'm just saying, if we do a policy, that would be an area that I will highly recommend and would beat the drum heavily, that we put that policy in place as quick as we can. and will beat the drum heavily, that we put that policy in place as quick as we can.
Thank you. So, um, we are at the end of our business piece of it. We are going to take a motion, well, I'll make the motion, go into executive session for uh, real estate and for legal.
I second it.
All right, and all in favor? All, all opposed? All right. Uh, I need uh, Mr. Boone, uh, and I need Mr. Scott.